Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this evening's Board of Selectmen meeting to order Tuesday, May 27th, at 7:07. I'd like to start by indicating all members are present, and we'll start immediately with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 4545A, 46 and 46A.
So moves?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous. Moving right along to our appointments for this evening. We do have a scheduled appointment for 7:00. It is with L. Pesch Kumar, A. Patel, Blue Tree Restaurant LLC, doing business as Subway 32622, reference to request to obtain a common victual license for the property located at 285B Main Street. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the manager.
I received notice from Shelley Newhouse, the health director, that Mr. Patel had taken out the application for a food establishment permit a couple of weeks ago, has not returned the application. So based upon the failure to return the application, she is not able to make a recommendation at this time. I did contact Mr. Patel at the end of last week. Guess he was out of state for the last couple of weeks. It's my understanding he does intend to purchase the business and go through the application process, but it appears at this point it's delayed. So my recommendation is that the board table the matter at this time.
Okay.
I've moved to table. The application is summarized by the manager.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous. Moving right along to communications.
The first communication is actually a series of letters that went to our legislative delegation. This is with respect to the Glen Road, Wildwood and Middlesex intersection. The town is seeking your assistance to place the Middlesex Ave., Glen Road and Middlesex Ave., Wildwood Street intersection project back on the state's transportation improvement plan and to commit to funding the completion of the project. The town recently received information that the long-awaited funding for the intersection project has once again been delayed. In the fall of 2013, the town was advised that the project would be advertised in January 2014. Due to the stalemate in reaching agreement over the passage of the state transportation bond bill, advertising was delayed. More recently, the town was informed that the project would be advertised in April of 2014. The project was on the tip at the time. However, the project was expected to be funded with non-federal aid dollars. When the bond bill was passed, a large portion of the NFA dollars were diverted from the Mass Department of Transportation to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority. District 4 was forced to cut back on funding projects, and Wilmington's project is a casualty of those cutbacks. As you know, a request to the Massachusetts Highway Department to have this project included in the tip was made initially in 2002. Once the town was advised to proceed, Green International Affiliates was hired using local funds in 2004 to develop a preliminary design for the intersection project. In 2006, the town again submitted a request to MHD for the project to be included on the tip or other transportation funding program. Through the work of Green International and former Public Works Superintendent Donald Onisite, the project was prepared for the 25% design stage. Based upon additional engineering design work completed by Green International and based upon public comment, the Board of Selectmen decided upon the preferred design at their meeting on November 24, 2008. Green International completed the necessary work to submit for final design to MHD in 2009. Three years later, on September 24, 2012, Mass DOT held a public hearing during the Board of Selectmen's meeting to receive comment on the project. Elected officials and residents implored Mass DOT to fund the project and expressed frustration of the length of time to reach that point. Due to the existing configuration of the intersections, the area presents serious challenges for drivers, cyclists and pedestrians. Multiple motor vehicle accidents have occurred over the years, and many residents have contacted the town to express their concern about the hazardous conditions and their frustration with the lack of progress towards completing the project. The town has expended nearly $94,000 in design services to prepare full plans for the intersection. Work associated with the reorientation of the intersections, paving, signage and signalization, is projected to cost $1.6 million. Your assistance is requested to reestablish the funding source for this project and to establish a firm commitment from Mass DOT to advertise the project, award a contract and ensure that the contractor completes the reconstruction of Middlesex Ave., Glen Road and the Middlesex Ave., Wildwood Street intersection in a timely manner. Please contact me to discuss the steps that can be taken to ensure that this project is placed back on the tip. Next, correspondence, some memorandum from me to the board, just updating you about news with respect to a Tennessee gas pipeline. You may have recently seen accounts in The Lowell Sun about a public meeting held by the Perples Selectmen to learn about plans for a natural gas pipeline through Perples. This same pipeline is proposed to come through North Wilmington. I advised Chairman O'Connell that I have been contacted by a representative from Kinder Morgan, parent company for Tennessee Gas, seeking authorization to conduct preliminary survey work on town property. After consulting with Michael Woods, DPW Director, about the areas underwater division jurisdiction and reviewing the permission form with Lou Ross from Town Council's office, I executed the permission form. The proposed pipeline appears to be at a very early stage of consideration. Based upon my conversation with Chairman O'Connell, we agreed that I would request a representative from Kinder Morgan attend an upcoming Selectmen's meeting to explain their intentions and to provide the opportunity for the board and the public to ask questions. I have received an email from the representative from Kinder Morgan indicating that they're looking for dates from the board for July and August. June apparently is out of the question at this point. Also correspondence that I sent to James Durkey. He had communicated with me about his concerns about this pipeline potentially impacting his property. And in my correspondence to him, I indicated that it is on our radar screen and that I'll be looking to have a representative in to talk about their plans and proposed location. Memorandum to the board. This is with regard to the Historical Commission. On May 16th, I met with Chairman of the Historical Commission Kathleen Black Reynolds and the town curator Terry McDermott regarding the Whitfield Building in Butters Farm. The Historical Commission is planning to develop a report outlining the available options for the rehabilitation of the Whitfield Building and make recommendations to me and the Board of Selectmen. In developing the report, the Commission will seek to identify available funds for rehabilitation, identify feasible uses for the building that meet town or other known needs, explore partnership opportunities with private nonprofit organizations for the funding of the rehabilitation and/or lease of the building, conduct an inspection of the building using a third party experienced in preservation. The report will be submitted by December 31, 2014. The Historical Commission is expected to add meetings to their usual schedule in order to accomplish the work of developing the report. While they work on the report, I will work with the Commission to also develop a request for proposal to sell all or part of the structure. I intend to have the RFP issued in July and to notify winning proposals of their award in September. A deadline to remove parts of the structure will be in the late winter, early spring 2015. With respect to Butters Farm, the Historical Commission has been investigating opportunities to sell the Butters Farm property through a stewardship program similar to that utilized for the Richardson home. Working with the Commission, I am pursuing the option of selling the home to a private owner with deed restrictions that protect the historic features and value. Discussions need to occur with Historic New England, which would have an oversight role in the long-term preservation of the historic features of the home, to understand what types of restrictions should be considered and what level of resources would be needed to oversee the compliance with the restrictions in perpetuity. Additionally, we will need to engage a real estate firm specializing in historic homes to ensure a potential buyer is found who would be willing to assume the home as is and be committed to its long-term preservation. I am working with the Historical Commission to schedule these discussions in the coming weeks. Just as a matter of follow-up, I am planning to meet tomorrow with representatives from the Historical Commission and Historic New England to discuss the process going forward on Butters Farm. I've asked the Historical Commission to attend the Board of Selectmen's meeting on June 23rd to report on their progress and answer any questions the board may have.
May I ask a question related to Whitfield? Jeff, the question may be more appropriate for June 23rd, but if I may ask you, I'm a little confused about the timelines of their report, the Historical Commission's report, that they intend to submit by December 31st. And the RFP, I'm trying to look at the dates here, issued in July notifying the winning proposals of their award in September, which obviously is before the December 31, 2014 report. Then the deadline to remove the parts of the structure will be in late winter, early spring of 2015, which would be before the next town meeting, which in my mind was when this issue would be brought back to the radar screen for vote by the townspeople. So I'm clearly not understanding what is intended here.
Well, if you recall, at a previous meeting of the board, I was directed to prepare a request for proposal seeking to sell either the building in its entirety for potential relocation or elements of the building that people may find of interest. So that is in the works. If it turns out that, you know, we'll go through that process, prepare the RFP, issue it if we have interested parties. And I would also note that this, I've made the historical, or at least Kathleen and Terry aware of this plan, they'll have an opportunity to review the RFP. If it turns out we have interested buyers, you know, that will certainly, I will make that information available to Kathleen and Terry. But depending upon whether it seems to be in the town's best interests, I would be looking to potentially go forward with that. The article at town meeting, as I read it, basically tables the request to raise an appropriate $150,000 for demolition. So it doesn't, as far as I can tell, bar the town from pursuing other options, which is essentially what this would constitute.
That's fine. And that's consistent. I remember when Mr. Newhouse originally made the suggestion that we go through this RFP process. I supported it then, I support it now. I just was trying to understand the timelines and how they related or interrelated if they did. And I suspect there'll be more conversation about that as this all proceeds, but thank you for highlighting it for me.
As now chair, I just want to know if anybody has given consideration to serving as a liaison to the Historical Commission. I think that one of the points that, well, a member of the Historical Commission made was that the Board of Selectmen wasn't proactive enough in communicating. And I don't necessarily agree with the, well, in fact, I disagree with that. But that being said, town meeting voted to table that for a year. Seems to me that we ought to be proactive in trying to avoid that criticism going forward. So I don't know if anybody's interested in serving.
This came up last meeting. Has anyone given any thought to that?
Lou had suggested possibly that, given the circumstances of our vote and the way things all sort of transpired leading up to town meeting, that it might be appropriate for me to sit in that role. I'm glad to do so. I just, I want to make sure that if you appoint me to that role, the Historical Commission will understand that I'm doing so as a liaison, as a communicator, that I'll be taking information that I glean from their meetings and sharing it with you, my colleagues. I'm not there to advocate on their behalf to you. I just want to make that clear to everyone here at this board, as well as to them who may be listening. So I think people might have mistaken my inclination to hold off the vote on the Whitfield until next year as support for the preservation of the Whitfield, and those are not the same thing. I think I've made that point a couple of times and hopefully clear. But I would be glad to sit in that role if you think that I'm worthy of the position given, that I would do so with an open mind on both sides of the arguments.
Second.
Did you want to make it in the form of a motion, Mike, to appoint?
Sure. I move that the board appoint Mr. Shampoo as the liaison to the Historical Commission for the purposes of sharing information regarding the Whitfield School.
Second.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next, under correspondence, is a memorandum, again, from me to the board with respect to the Entile Farm Development Committee. The Entile Farm Development Committee is launching a community survey to gather input on the concept design. The survey will evaluate whether the current conceptual design meets the vision and expectations expressed by the town through the various public design activities conducted to date. The survey consists of five questions and will take less than five minutes to complete. It is available online by clicking on the link on our homepage at www.wilmingtonma.gov. Paper versions will also be available in my office, the Wilmington Memorial Library and the Bezale Senior Center. The deadline for the responses is Friday, June 20. The pre-designed community survey received over 1,000 responses. The committee is hoping to meet or exceed this number with this effort. I ask for your assistance in promoting this critical public outreach effort.
Mr. House, if I could just add just a quick comment, just to my colleagues and those that may be listening at home, is that anything that we can do as a board through your own personal networking or through your social media outlets and emails and things of that nature to share this out with people would certainly be appreciated. We are getting into the real final end of this design process where, quite frankly, when we get to town meeting, we won't be able to make any changes. So we're trying to proactively get people interested in talking about it, and as we move into the next step, 75% of it is going to be completed. So we're not in the home stretch by any means. We still have a lot of work to be done, but certainly anyone that has any feedback that you need to get our attention, please feel free to either contact the manager, contact me, or get on to the town website and share that because we're definitely interested. And we will also be having a third design workshop in the July timeframe, and that will be the final workshop for people to come in person to share their feedback as well. So we'll have more to follow on that. Thank you.
Might I suggest that if any of the members of the press in the room have a couple of extras inches of press space, it might be worthwhile to get it into your publications. Thank you.
Next, under correspondence, is documentation received from Federal Emergency Management Agency. They're alerting us to essentially a 90-day public comment period with respect to the draft revisions to the flood maps. On February 11, 2012, 2011, and November 12, 2013, the Department of Homeland Security's Federal Emergency Management Agency provided your community with preliminary and courtesy copies of the revised flood insurance rate map and flood insurance study. We have published a notice of the proposed flood hazard determination in the federal register and will be publishing a public notification concerning the appeal process explained below in the Wilmington Town Crier on or about May 21st and May 28th. They go on to say, "These proposed flood hazard determinations, if finalized, will become the basis for flood plain management measures that your community must adopt or show evidence of having in effect to qualify or remain qualified for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program." They describe in the correspondence the process that we need to go through to make sure there's the adequate opportunity for comment. They ask that an agency within the town be designated as the recipient of any comments. I've determined that the Planning and Conservation Office will serve that role. So if there are individuals who, when they go, and there's a reference in the public notice to the link, they can go to to actually determine the areas of impact. Essentially, for this particular review period, it's largely the area around the Shawshin River water basin. If homeowners or businesses believe that they're impacted and they have, as they describe here, scientifically-based information that would refute the designation of delineation, then they should file a request and send it to the Planning and Conservation, attention of Winifred McGowan. That information will be compiled, and we are also internally looking at our own, any impacts that these designations may have on town property. And we will send this information as a packet off to FEMA before the 90-day expiration. It's actually 90 days from the second notice, so May 28th, it would be August 28th that comments would be due in by. Under Board to Consider, you have a request from Khalid Hesmeel for a hawk and pedal The application was submitted on April 18th. As you know, part of the process now, in addition to the review that has been done historically by both the Board of Health and the Police Department, requires fingerprinting review. The Police Department is responsible for that. That was adopted a couple town meetings ago. Everything came back okay, and the Health Director, Shelley Newhouse, indicates I recommend approval of the hawk and pedal license for Khalid Hesmeel, subject to meeting all the requirements of the Board of Health. And also the Police Department, upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the 2014 application for permit to hawk and pedal requested by Khalid Hesmeel, 1123 Revere Beach Parkway, 101 Revere, Mass. The department's review of Mr. Hesmeel has determined that there is no evidence to hinder him from being granted the permit as requested. Just by way of information, this gentleman has also submitted a bid to serve as the vendor at Silver Lake. As you know, every year, the Recreation Department puts out a request for bids to have a vendor come in and provide various foods to individuals who are over at the main beach area, and he was awarded the bid, subject to getting his hawk and pedal license.
Okay, well, based on the recommendations that were received by the various departments, would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request?
So moved.
Motion's been made, second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a request that the board execute an easement agreement. You may recall at the annual town meeting, there was an article posted that would authorize the town and specifically through the Board of Selectmen, the ability to enter into a roadway rounding and drainage easement agreement with the owner of property at 9 Adams Street. Just by way of brief history, it was brought to our attention, actually last August, by the owner, that the turn or the corner that runs off of Middlesex onto Adams Street was actually on her property. She had her property surveyed, and the determination was made. We checked with our Engineering Division and confirmed that to be the case. Mike Woods and I have had a number of conversations with the property owner, and, you know, first it looked at whether it would be advisable to simply square off the intersection. It appeared that to do that would create potential public safety issues in terms of the turning radius. So in the end, we determined the best approach would be to seek an easement. The request at town meeting was to raise an appropriate $5,000 for that purpose. $4,500 is slated for the owner who is seeking an amount of compensation for that easement, and then the remaining money would be used for some curbing that would be placed around the corner there, some granite curbing. So this evening, what I'm asking the board to consider is voting to authorize this easement agreement, which we will then have council file at the registry and go from there.
Would anyone like to make a motion to grant the execution of the roadway rounding and drainage easement for 9 Adams Street?
Madam Chair, so moved as described by the town manager.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Anything further? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, the last item under Board to Consider is the summer schedule for the board. I just put, by way of suggestion, a couple of dates here, understanding that in the past, the board likes to try to schedule your summer meetings towards the middle of the month. So a couple of options here, July 14th and August 11th.
Looking at those dates, does anyone have any schedule conflicts with those at all?
What are the dates again? I was just doing a little while.
July 14th and August 11th.
July 14th, August 11th? No.
Give me two seconds if, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
July 14th.
No, that's fine.
And August what? 11th?
11th.
July 14th, yeah.
Right now, it's wide open.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Sure.
Do we move? Do we make, do we just kind of say that, or is there a motion for that?
I don't think there's a motion that's necessary. I just.
No, I would think it's more a housekeeping thing.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll plan on posting meetings for July 14th and August 11th for the summer, for those two months.
Okay. All set with that?
Yes.
Okay, so public comments? Appears we have none. New Business Committee reports. I'll start with Mr. Newhouse.
Nothing other than, I see the "Join Us" form for Chief Bradbury, and I know we've recognized him publicly, but again, just wanted to wish him all the best in his retirement.
Agreed, and I'd just like to thank everybody who come out yesterday to celebrate Memorial Day and show the respect that the town always, always shows its veterans. And especially yesterday, I thought the crowd was extremely high at the cemetery, and it does not go unnoticed by the families that have lost somebody. So, thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to dittle with Mr. Samaglia, you just stated Louis, perhaps, I think, one of the best veterans agents in the Massachusetts, in the Commonwealth. Lou, I got to tell you, great job. Everything was wonderful. It was a great.
It was a great time, great day for that. You know, and you always do a great job, and I got to tell you that. Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah. I’ll effectively echo comments that have been made. I, I wanted to compliment Lou specifically for putting together all weekend. I mean, yesterday is the sort of the marquee event that most people see. And it was, it was put together so well. And every single person that was there seemed to have a good time through the parade. And, and it was certainly a moving testament to those that have served and those that have died in service to our country. So thank you for doing such a great job in that regard. But also rededicating the monuments and taking, making sure that the cemetery gets decorated and all those little details that I think a lot of folks maybe don’t take it, take into account. And all the people that participate in that are also deserving of our thanks as well because the town looked aces yesterday and through the weekend. So my compliments also go to the people that came out into the town itself. Also wanted to congratulate Chief Bradbury. I hope to stop by and shake his hand personally, but if for some reason that doesn’t happen, I wanted to get that out publicly and I’ll convey a message to him as well. And lastly, I just wanted to, if I’m not mistaken, I think that, that the town manager will tell us in a moment that high school graduation is this Saturday. And so to all the graduating seniors, I wish them my most heartfelt and sincere congratulations and the greatest of luck and success in their future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to also thank you, Lou, very much. Obviously, we were there as a group yesterday and you never lose your passion for your, this isn’t really a job for you. This is just a way of life and it really, really shows. And you certainly have a great support system around you to help you do that. And I know you’re the first to give credit to your total team that works with you in your office. So thank you for that. And thank you to Jeff and the town for putting that together. And I also wanted to offer my congratulations to Chief Bradbury. I will be there tomorrow to join in that celebration. And we will be presenting a certificate from the Board tomorrow. So certainly, congratulations to Chief Bradbury. And that is all I have. And we’ll move on to important dates.
Important dates, May 31st is Boy Scout Troop 136 Yard Sale fundraiser, 4th of July, parking lot, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. As was previously noted, June 1st is the Wilmington High School graduation. June 3rd is the Wilmington High School topping off ceremony. Just to, by way of information, the topping off ceremony is a tradition that has been going on for quite some time, not only in this country, but in other countries where as a building comes to some measure of closure, they, when they’re placing the last steel beam on, is kind of a ceremonial process there of honoring the effort to that point. In this case, it’s my understanding that members of the class of 2015, along with some of the construction workers, will actually sign the beam. The treasurer, State Treasurer, Mr. Steve Grossman, will be on hand, as well as our legislative delegation. So that is scheduled for June 3rd at 10:30 at the high school. June 4th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Shawshin Tech graduation is on June 5th. June 7th, Fishing Derby, Town, Town Beach, 9:00 AM to noon. June 7th is another brush off, brush drop-off date, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. June 8th, Summer Fun Preview, Hardin Tavern, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. June 9th is the next Board of Selectmen’s meeting here at 7:00 PM. Old Main, I’m sorry, June 10th is the Olin Public Information Meeting at the Middle School Auditorium, 7:00 PM. Again, this is a, an update on the status of the Olin efforts. I would encourage people to attend. Rotary Trivia Night, Shriners Auditorium, June 13th, 7:00 PM. June 14th, Town Beach opens for the summer. It’ll be open with lifeguards on duty through August 17th. June 15th is the Farmer’s Market, first opening for them, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:30 AM to 1:30 PM. June 16th, Flag Retirement Ceremony, Minuteman Headquarters. Then June 20th and 21st is the Wilmington Relay for Life at the Middle School, begins Friday afternoon, goes all through the night and wraps up around noon time on Saturday, the 21st. Again, I encourage people to turn out for that. Then June 22nd is the Council for the Arts 34th Annual Art Exhibition.
Okay. That completes important dates. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion’s been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. Good night.